Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's special meeting of the Mawa Board of Education for October 28th, 2020. Please note, due to COVID-19 health crisis, this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education will not be physically open to the public. This is to ensure we follow best practices for social distancing. The board meeting will be live streamed to the public via Zoom. The webinar during this public portion of this meeting, members of the public can participate through the Q and A feature of Zoom. All participants must provide their name and address, and your comment and or question will be read and included in the board's public record of the meeting, just as it would for a standard board meeting. Would you please take roll call, Mr. Bleeker?
Dr. Morthe.
Here.
Ms. Cohn.
Yeah.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conoco.
Here.
And Ms. Barron.
Here.
I have a notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on October 28th, 2020 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the county clerk. Everyone, please rise for the flag. And Mr. Kizmarski, would you like to leave us some?
The wish to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Agenda questions, please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. May I have a motion to open to the public? Mr. Kizmarski, second by Ms. Ziccon. We'll take a few moments.
Kim, we don't see anything coming in for the chat with your questions, so.
All right. May I have a motion to close to the public? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. This is the administrator's report. He's delivering a report for us this evening.
Yes. Okay, um, thank you very much. I wanted to take a moment. We have two resolutions on the agenda tonight. The one is the strategic plan, which we are going to be doing in just a moment, but I did want to take this opportunity to introduce one other resolution that needs to be acted on by the Board of Education. Due to recent changes at the state with regards to how public meetings are conducted, they have indicated new changes that we need to make to some of our practices and procedures for doing public meetings during a state mandated pandemic such as what we are in right now. So some of those changes, then, these are all going to go into effect with our next board meeting on November 11th. Changes are going to be that questions can be emailed to me. We have always used the chat feature to submit questions from the members of the public. Members of the public can email questions as well. We have set up a dedicated email address for that. It's boesecretary@mawa.k12 nj.us. And all these instructions are going to be on our website as well, on the same page where you would find our agenda for board members or for members of the public. Other things that are going to be slightly different as we are required to through this mandate is that when we are conducting our meetings, we are going to modify how we do them remotely to also provide a phone number that people can call into to participate in the meeting and allow members of the public who are participating remotely to speak and verbally ask questions in addition to the type in chat feature of Zoom as well. Again, all this will be going to effect with our November 11th meeting. The last piece that we are again required to change is that with the governor's reopening of certain indoor activities, one of them being board meetings and public meetings, we still have the restriction of no more than 25 people in an indoor meeting. That's per the governor's mandate. We have set up and instructions are on our website for how members of the public that may want to physically be here for our board meetings can do so. We are asking them to inform us in advance that they will be attending and coming to our meeting. We're also going to be having them complete similar procedures that we have for visitors coming to our schools, such as an attestation form indicating that they're not showing any current symptoms of COVID, of COVID-19, as well as taking a temperature check. We are going to have those procedures in place. In addition, for any members of the public that want to physically attend our meetings, we also will always have the Zoom feature as well going forward for the foreseeable future, so attendance can be done that way as well. The resolution is on the agenda. It was on the agenda that was made public as well, so I'm not going to read it. And again, we have some instructions online that will be posted tomorrow as we come up to our November 11th meeting, when this will first be put into effect. Thank you very much.
May I have a motion to proceed on item number nine? Mr. Kizmarski, second by Ms. Conoco. Any questions or comments on this item from any board members? All right, could you please take a call? Yes, Ms. Copeland.
Will the Zoom also be available during these meetings? Are we only doing the conference call, the in-person options?
No, it'll be basically three ways to participate. It's either physically being here, calling in through a full line through Zoom, or participating through Zoom on your computer and video as we have right now. You all.
Okay, could you please take roll call?
Dr. Morthe.
Yes.
Ms. Cohn. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
And Ms. Barron.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to, oh, we're planning on having a report, I guess Dr. Toro giving us a presentation on our strategic planning.
Yes, Ms. Barron, Mr. Matley is also going to be joining us. I just promoted him to a panelist and he's just coming in right now, so we can just take one moment for Matt to, Mr. Lee, to join us.
Sure.
Everyone seem to be okay?
If everybody can mute, if there's anybody that's not muted. Okay, thank you.
Is it okay, Mr. Bleeker?
Matt, yes, we hear you.
Excellent, great.
With this, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee to begin our presentation, and then Dr. D'Toro will be sharing his screen to walk us through some slides.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Bleeker, Ms. Barron, and Mr. D'Toro for inviting me tonight. I'm really happy to be here for what amounts to not only a celebration of a job well done, but also that of a journey about to begin. You know, our strategic planning is a culmination of a vision by the Board of Education, what was really a monumental organizational effort by the administration led by Dr. Turo and the entire administrative team for that matter. Certainly, some really enthusiastic participation by all the stakeholders in the schools, including staff, students, the board, and really what amounts to an exceptionally supportive community. As I mentioned very early in the process, the attendance at our first meeting was something I had not experienced in any other district. So I was really pleased that not only we had that great turnout when we started, but also that this community stayed engaged throughout. And even when we had to move our final sessions to a virtual platform, we still had outstanding participation and the interest and the dedication of the Mawa community really shown through. And, you know, I think that that will stand us well as we fulfill all of the components of the strategic plan across the next five years. And before I hand off to Dr. D'Toro to review the details of the process and the plan, I just want to encourage all of the folks listening tonight to stay engaged with this as the plan unfolds. I'm sure that you will realize a great sense of satisfaction for the work that you put in and the accomplishments that we've made, and especially as they become applied to the educational lives and progress of the students of the Mawa Public Schools. So, as I've said before, I really want to thank the Mawa Board of Education for having New Jersey School Boards Association involved in this project. It's been fulfilling in every way. And I wish you much luck in creating a brighter future for the Mawa Public Schools. Dr. D'Toro.
Thank you very much, Matt. I think I could speak for all of Mawa Administration, Board of Education, just to say thank you to you. You have been extremely helpful from the beginning, whether it's sharing resources, your guidance, or connecting us to surrounding districts that are already in the process. Being able to go to other districts to see the meetings in action, to see the products that they're creating, really gave us a very clear focus of what we needed to do to be successful. And I think without that, it would have been extremely challenging for us to get to this place. So thank you so much for all that you have done throughout the process and the patience that you've given us, because I know that there's been a lot of back and forths, and yeah, I like that, but let's try something different. And you have been very supportive and patient, and we can't thank you enough. So thank you for all your time.
Absolutely. My pleasure to do, and that back and forth is really a growth process for us as well, so I was happy to be involved in it.
Awesome. So let me share my screen. And then we'll get started with the presentation. So before we get started with the presentation, I think it's extremely important for us to go backwards before we can go forward. When I say we need to go backwards, at the first meeting, the previous superintendent and myself stood up, and we tried to give a little bit of an overview of our district, and I think it's worth to take a couple of minutes now to talk through this. In Mawa, we're extremely proud of the work that is being done, the work that has been done. We have been able to be successful in a number of different things, but we also need to be honest with ourselves and understand that the work's not finished, and we need to make sure that we're providing the best educational experience for our students and our community. That being said, along the lines of our goal-setting process, when we evaluated what that really looks like, sounds like, and feels like prior to this experience, at the end of each year, the administrative team would come together, reflect on the year, identify things that were going well, identify things that we need to do, address, and then start to create goals for individual schools. What we were really lacking were two major things. One was a singular vision of what our district needs to do to progress forward as a collective unit. And the second thing, which I think is extremely valuable, is more than just the administrative voice. The power of the diverse perspective across our community is what we should be proud of, is going to give us a perspective that we might not be able to see, but that perspective is going to be able to drive us forward and see things and improve on things that we need to do to get better and better each and every year. When I say better and better, what I mean by that is, you know, I spoke about the success of Mawa, and the most recent NICH poll identified Mawa Public Schools as the 15th best school district in New Jersey. That's something that we should be proud of. But it's also something that we can't stay static, though. We need to continue to move forward and continue to identify things that we can do that much better. That being said, as Matt talked about, when we decided to take on this strategic plan journey, let me talk to you through the process of where we started and how we got to now. During the summer, we started to have, the summer of 19, we started to have conversations about this and talk about the importance of it. We were able to bring this idea to the instructional committee. Then in turn, we brought it to the executive committee and then had a formal presentation in September that Matt Lee was able to provide a very comprehensive presentation to our board explaining the purpose and worth of this process. Thankfully, the board was on board, and we decided to start the process. The process was comprehensive, and it was important for us to get, as I stated before, as many voices at the table. We broke the process up into three specific meetings. The first meeting happening in December, then the second meeting in February, and then the May meeting was very unique, and I'm going to get to that in just a second. The first meeting is definitely a point of pride, and it should be a point of pride for all of us. We had over 130 participants that decided to come to speak about Mawa. Those participants varied from board members to administrators, to teachers, to community members, parents, and those community members that had no connection to the school's district aside from being community members, which we were so excited that they were there. And we also were able to include our students in different capacities as well. During that meeting, there were two things that were asked. First meeting, the first thing that was asked during that meeting is, what are our points of pride? What are things that we should be collectively very proud of being a part of the Mawa community? And the second piece is, what are the areas of growth? Now, something I want to share to the people who might not have been present is usually when you get into a group like this, people kind of flock together and friends sit together and people in like positions sit together. The way Matt and the team created this experience is every single table, we had about 13 different groups, and every group had a representative from each of the stakeholder pieces. So it was administrator, teacher, parent, board member, all were together at the table. And the first thing you think about is, would the conversation be stifled during this experience? I can tell you that I was fortunate enough to walk around and eavesdrop on the different conversations I sat in on a couple, and people were very complimentary, and other times they were very, very honest when it came to areas of growth. And that's something that we really need and we appreciate it, and we wanted to make sure that we memorialize. So Matt was able to have everybody memorialize their feedback on post-it paper. We put it up around the JK auditorium. And if you go to our website under the first meeting, there's a document with 11 pages of feedback from the community. And it really, and you know, the feedback ranged on the pro and on the area that we need to get better at. It ranged from facilities to programs to community involvement to communication and just overall educational experience for our students. So there was really a diverse perspective at that first meeting, and we were greatly, greatly appreciative of that. The second meeting that Matt was able to lead for us is our Dare to Dream meeting. And in this meeting, what Matt and the team asked our community members to do and teachers and administrators to do was really to think about, you know, take what we did in our first meeting. More importantly, identify the things that we talked about of areas of growth and start to identify, where do you want Mawa to go? What do you want Mawa to be? What are things that we want to continue to develop or create in Mawa? And all of the community members and stakeholders were able to develop these conversations and identify, this is what I want Mawa to look like in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years. This is what I want Mawa to provide to my children. This is what, as a teacher, this is what I want, this is the type of environment I want to work in. And we were able to take all of that information, again, it's all on our website, and put it into a document that is about four pages worth of feedback. Matt was able to go through those four pages, work with our team, and identify different themes. Of those themes, there were probably about 15 different themes. A lot of them overlapped, but we were able to walk out with four overall dominant themes from those two meetings. And the four themes were curriculum and instruction, facilities, social emotional learning, and community connections. And I say those four themes because those four themes drove our next meeting. Now, our next meeting was very unique. Our next meeting took place in May, and as we all know, we were in a very different situation in that time. The country was shut down, and there were a lot of challenges that we were facing. I greatly appreciate the commitment of our district that we stayed the course. This is work that's going to continue after all of this is done, hopefully sooner rather than later. And we decided that we did not want to let this fall by the wayside. The work was too important, and we wanted to close out this experience so we can start to build, and I'll talk about the build in a second. So as I said, I identified those four themes, and with this meeting, usually we come together and we do it in one meeting. We felt online, it was too difficult to get everybody's voice, so we decided to break our third meeting up into four separate meetings, one meeting per theme. So we had four separate Zoom meetings that were able to take all of the information from one and two, meeting one and two. And Matt and the team asked all the people involved, and just like Matt said, it was very well attended, to start to identify goal statements. So in the area of curriculum instruction, what do you want specific to your students' experience or for teachers, your experience as a professional here? What do we need? And we started, we allowed everybody to contribute and start to write out goal statements. And we had a platform that allowed for all the goal statements to be viewed. People were able to like goal statements, so we started to identify common interests and agreements across those goal statements. And Matt was able to, in his experience doing all of this work, he was able to take all of that information, identify what are the commonalities, and share what he thought was best for a goal statement that encapsulates all of the ideas. We took that goal statement for each of the meetings and then decided, where do we go from here? So from the curriculum and instruction meeting, the facilities meeting, the social emotional learning meeting, and the community connections meeting, we left with four goal statements. The administrative team then came together with all the information that we had from the first three meetings, and we started to identify objectives, because a goal statement is fine. We need to start to identify actionable items that we can start to utilize to build towards that ultimate goal. So we, as an administrative team, developed those goal statements. The next part is another point of pride for all of us. As I said in the beginning of this meeting, something that we were lacking before is all the voices at the table. Now, as I shared, all the voices were at the table prior, but once we identified the goal statement and built the objectives, we wanted to continue to have that collaboration. At that time, we sent our tentative plan to both the Mawa Education Association, the teachers, the exec board, as well as the Board of Education. We were able to get great feedback from both parties. We used that feedback and we adjusted. It wasn't just a, let's just check the box type of experience. We were able to gather that information, and it was very valuable feedback that we were able to use to create our ultimate product that we're presenting today. Allow me just a couple of minutes to talk through our first theme of our strategic plan. Obviously, we're here for curriculum and instruction. That's one prong of our educational experience here. And I'm not someone who reads from a slide, allow me just a moment to read our goal statement. Our goal statement for curriculum and instruction is to develop a rich and diverse, standards-based curriculum that challenges and inspires our children through the use of essential 21st century learning opportunities for an ever-changing society, to further build the learner's capacity for success in the areas of collaboration, critical and creative thinking, respectfully nurturing their future pathway choices. Now, listen, I understand that there's a lot of stuff there. And in order for us to accomplish that, we need to unpack that in five specific goals. Now, these goals that we created are K-12 specific. They are not grade level specific or school specific. That next piece I'll talk about in a second. But as you look at that goal statement and then you go down and start to look at those objectives, you start to see some critical things when you talk about great education, which we are constantly looking at our curriculum to make sure that it's well-balanced, and it creates a diverse experience for our kids. When you start to talk about globally thinking and creating global experiences, there's one thing to say, and there's another piece to do it. It's a point of focus for us for our next five years, and it's something that we need to continue to dig into and get better at. Other things that we're talking about, about getting better at is provide a diverse perspective. Create that civic engagement for our students. Identify opportunities to have diverse perspectives at the table. Really unpack diversity. What does diversity look like within our community? And what does diversity look like outside of our community? How do we learn about it? How do we respect it? How do we understand it? And how do we build upon it? What are some creative opportunities that we're giving to our children? Not only are elementary kids, but are high school kids, and what are opportunities outside of our district that we're affording to our children? So as you look at those objectives, I'm not going to read them chapter and verse. Those objectives are going to drive our next stage, which I'm going to get to after the next three themes. But I wanted just to take a minute to talk about for curriculum and instruction, that is what, this is a product of all of the conversations, of all of the feedback, and all of the suggestions that were provided from all the stakeholders from day one.
Ready for me, Dr. D'Toro?
Ready for you, Ms. Rosa.
Thank you, sir. As Dr. D'Toro did, I'll share with you the goal statement regarding social emotional learning, to foster a demonstratively supportive learning environment that empowers students to be safe physically and emotionally and allows for the healthy development of balanced and well-rounded individuals who will authentically integrate into our communities while simultaneously achieving their academic career and personal goals. You know, the beauty of social emotional learning is as it has progressed throughout the years, there has been a wealth of research that has been executed on it and which we can rely upon in order to implement within our district. And what is clear about social emotional learning programs is that they are most successful if they occur within a supportive context. They are designed to build the adult competencies. They partner with family and community. They target key behaviors and skills, and they set reasonable goals. In my opinion, the SEL work that we do and will continue to do is the foundation upon which all of the other learning in our district will take place. Students need to be in safe, supportive, self-aware, and emotionally sound environments in order to achieve their truest potential. The SEL program has true opportunities to help us decrease the behaviors that can erode our community and help to defray the psychological stressors for children. Our current program of mindful practices is of great value and fully adaptable. But nonetheless, we set several objectives, as you see here, to look at our SEL program. Do our programs communicate a healthy mindset and behaviors that are valued by? Do our programs communicate a healthy mindset and behaviors that are valued by our community? Can we engage and will we engage in the rich diversity of our community to cultivate the agreed values? Lead our community and learn from our community to make our school a just and respectful place for all students? Engage the parents, identify their needs, and offer programming for it. Take time to analyze our programs and adjust. Find ways to develop our staff with an emphasis on engaging our diversity. I took time this morning to meet with two of the district leaders of social emotional learning, Dominic Liata, Director of Guidance, Craig Alfano, Social Worker. And they articulated to me that they wanted me to emphasize that they truly expect the district to agree to make SEL a priority with more time for teachers and paraprofessionals to learn via professional development, and for students to have opportunities to practice SEL within the school and in their homes. And I believe that the framework that was started with our task force here is the great foundation for which our program will meet the criteria that research has designed to say is what makes a sound program.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo. Our next goal statement is related to community relations, community connections. And as my colleagues did, I will also read the goal statement aloud. It is to create enriching collaborations for students that engage community-based experts and highlight meaningful, real-world experiences both in and out of the classroom to further promote the continued transparent and honest communication amongst the Mawa community. This goal statement is rooted in four targeted principles or objectives that while a few of these, many of these are initiatives we've already started, what's great is this strategic planning process allows us to pave a much clearer and intentional path forward. So the first, we know we have to pay special attention to the creation of experiences like internships, externships, and formal slash informal mentor-mentee opportunities for our kids. A goal that is definitely focused in our Mawa High School Pathways Program. This allows students more vast opportunities to see coursework in action and in practical, everyday workplace experiences. Our second piece of this statement, we know we have to make a conscious effort in taking a look at how to focus our attention on our new families to the district and the Mawa community. So this means we will be going beyond the Welcome to District packet that we've done, where we will thoughtfully engage new families through meaningful connections with school HSOs and/or school community-specific assigned ambassadors. We will help these families get acclimated to school and our program in order to assist them in finding success, because we recognize it will take all of us to find that success. Our third piece of this goal statement is we know we will have to expand our engagement of our local experts. And this expansion will occur at all grade levels. It's something that we've started and something that we feel is important to continue. We will provide students with a unique perspective related to careers and what skill sets are required for specific career paths. We will promote opportunities where authentic voices from the field bring context to our curriculum. And we will continue to breathe life into the seedling of hashtag Mawa connects expert directory, which is something that's been introduced to the district and something we plan on really, really bringing to life even further in the future. The last piece, we know we have to concentrate our efforts on supporting and embracing our district's diversity. In doing so, we will find focus ways to celebrate our differences generally and purposely look for opportunities to enhance our curriculum, something we've seen across content areas to serve all groups, as well as opportunities to continue to foster a school culture where our diversity is essentially our strength. So these principles and objectives bring a whole new meaning to what we've been referring to as hashtag Mawa connects, and we look forward to what is ahead for the hashtag and for us as a district.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to take a moment and discuss the facilities portion of the strategic plan. We'll begin as we did the other slides, a reading of the goal statement for facilities. To create a safe, inspiring, student-centric, and progressive learning environment that will support student health and safety while equipping our learners with the experiences and skills essential to compete in an ever-evolving world. I'll go through each one of the objectives individually and highlight areas where we are looking to enhance some of the practices that we already do and share with everybody some of the things that have already begun to address some of these objectives and fit them within our strategic plan. Regularly evaluate our learning spaces. It's great that the part of the budget process already, since I've been here with Mawa, usually the first step begins with a meeting with the principal to see what areas of focus are individual to them and to their schools, to see what we can address in the upcoming budget, where we can allocate some of our capital funds and maintenance and building improvement funds to see where they can most be beneficial to the students and for the next school year. That process is great because it brings the principals in, and it also makes them part of what is going to be for the school for the next year. Regularly innovate our innovative learning spaces. Want to talk about a recent addition to this, a recent move in this. At our last board meeting, we were able to approve sending down to the state of New Jersey a submission, an application to renovate our Joyce Kilmer School to one of the rooms, a computer lab in Joyce Kilmer that's going to be turned into an innovation lab in the coming year. Work to be done over the summer that will help to bring in some of the some of the items from the Mawa steam facility that was completed last year, bring some of those aspects to Joyce Kilmer and make that a makerspace environment over there. Again, through our budget process, our other schools, our elementary schools have really made great strides in developing their makerspace individual locations and rooms, finding rooms within their school that they can turn into a makerspace environment for the students. Of course, we had the addition of Mawa High School of the T3 building just last year to bring in some of those aspects as well. Identify outdated or underutilized spaces. Again, a great process that we have been doing over the last couple of years is to take a look, see what we have within the school already and see how we can reframe that, rework that into a space that addresses some of the needs of the students and staff. Another great thing that has already been started with identifying underutilizing spaces was our audit that we conducted last year, our facility audit, which was an extremely comprehensive audit done by land associates from Midland Park, where they spent a thorough amount of time speaking with each principal, going through every school, every little square inch and area, identifying potential areas of need as it relates to HVAC, electrical, paving, roofing, where possible additions can be made, if there's any, in consultation with the principals, to add and enhance what the schools already have. The last objective, allocating resources annually and long-term. That speaks directly to fiscal management and how we are properly allocating and taking the resources that we have, whether it's our capital reserve account, capital projects that we do annually in the budget, or other resources through grants that could potentially help identify and come bring to life some of the items that we're addressing in our strategic plan to benefit the staff and students. The last item that I wanted to just say was our facilities group is the amount of valuable expertise that we already have in the district to help us identify these areas and enhance them. An example I wanted to share was wonderful to see when we were building the high school steam addition, how we brought in some supervisors of the areas that would be in that building and really tapped into their knowledge and expertise to see how we can add and include in that space to make it the best that it can be for the students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now that we had a chance to talk about the four themes and the goal statements and the objectives that are aligned to it, that's our plan, and I think the most important thing that we need to discuss now is if this is approved, then what? Because the plan itself is just a piece of paper. It's the action following that makes it really effective for our district. What we decided as a collective group is we needed to start to identify some action that we could take moving forward. One is the continuous communication that we have with all the stakeholders. This is one of the many examples. Obviously, the communication started from the beginning, but it's not going to stop after this meeting. We need to have a commitment to ongoing communication and sharing of our process with our community, starting with the board, but then also with the community at large. Part of that communication, prior to showcasing it in a presentation form, is really to continue to engage our existing committees that we have in place, but also, if needed, create new committees. Now, we are very fortunate in our district that we have our instructional committee that can really drive great conversations with our curriculum and instruction theme. We have a community relations committee already in place that can continue to build those community connections. Obviously, we have a facilities committee that will really drive that conversation. But we have a number of other committees and dedicated staff members, as well as community members, that give their time for the ultimate product of great education here in Mawa. We have the MEA that we want to continue to have conversations with and get feedback so we can move towards those goals. We have the HSO. We also have the MSF and the Mawa Municipal Alliance that are existing committees. Obviously, the administrative team, it's an ongoing collaborative effort. We just engaged with a new group, a new coalition in our community. It's the Mawa Diversity Equity Inclusion Coalition. We've had great conversations over the past couple of months. We're excited to sit down. There are a number of parents and community members that are involved in that coalition that really want to support us in providing our students with a diverse and rich experience along lines of curricular offerings and really just social, emotional enhancements to our curriculum to make sure that our students have come with a respect for diversity and awareness of all the contributions that have taken place. And finally, it's really important for our administrative team to come together, take a look at these four themes, and build goals that are specific to their age group and the community in which they serve. It's important for our K-5 schools to come together, look at these themes, look at the goal statements and objectives, and say, what does this mean for us? What do we currently have in place? What do we want to build upon? Or what do we want to create that's new? Not only create, but what are some supports that we need to give to our staff along lines of coed PD and ongoing PD so they feel comfortable and supported so they can execute that process? And finally, we want to make sure that with any goals, with any objectives, you want to monitor it and assess the effectiveness of our process. That monitoring and that sharing piece needs to happen on a yearly basis. The monitoring is ongoing. The sharing needs to happen at the end of each year. This is something that we need to get up in front of the board and say, "We have committed to this strategic plan over the next five years." For the strategic plan, this is the work that's been done by so many people to make sure that we're achieving our ultimate goals. So these are just some of the things that we need to do to make sure that this strategic plan is successful. But it's also something that we're going to continue to build, assess, and adjust over time. So before I hand it over for any questions, something I started with, and I definitely want to end with, I want to thank Matthew Lee again for his commitment to us. I want to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to take part in this journey. The teachers, there were so many teachers who were involved in providing us with real and honest feedback that was very enlightening for this process, and we use that to develop these goals. Our administrative team was able to start with us from the beginning and really walk with us along this process. And of course, the entire community as a whole, our parents, the other community members, and our students. That's definitely a point of pride for us that we were able to get student voice at all levels, K through 12. That student voice is embedded into this plan. So thank you to everybody to allow us to get to this point. Does anybody have any questions?
I think everybody's, sorry. I think everybody's good with this, Mike, and Lisa, and Dennis, and Dr. Fitz, and everyone else. And Matt, thank you so very much for the community and the teachers and everyone that was involved in this process and all the Board of Ed members. I really want to thank everyone because it's coming to fruition. I'd say it's an ongoing effort, but it's so impressive, and I'm very happy to see that everyone's so involved and just want to keep that momentum going. So thank you to everyone. Anyone else? Any comments from anyone? Or good? Yes, Dr. Morthee?
I also just wanted to second that, and I wanted to really say that although the process, you know, sorry, that the process, you know, started with a mindset of this was going to be a different path. We've stuck with it, and, you know, I think that it's really important that, look, as a board, we're very behind this, but we're very appreciative of the community being behind this and everyone who's participated, because again, this is a long-term strategy for our district, and we're glad that, you know, everyone wants to be a part of it. So again, thanks, you know, to everyone, Matt Lee, Dr. Fitz, Dr. Showen, who kicked us off, Dr. Dettoro, Lisa Rizzo, Dennis Fair, Kyle Bleeker, all of you have just done a really, really tremendous job with all of this. So thank you very much.
I'm just adding my thanks and congratulations to the group for the hard work that went into this, and especially during this pandemic period. I'm sure Mike Dettoro got some pushback from some of his colleagues when he tried to keep this effort going forward, and it's a testament to the district's commitment to excellence that even in the pandemic, we were able to allocate resources, our energies, to making this process come to fruition. Essentially, what the strategic plan does, as has been stated in the presentation, is it gives the district focus on where it will be going down the road. And it's a nice concise document. The four themes of the strategic plan are fairly well-understood. It was remarkable, the input that we got from all the stakeholders, how there was unanimity on these items, both strengths and opportunities for improvement, and it took a lot of courage for the organization. And it took a lot of courage for the organization to open itself, to make itself vulnerable to improvement. Downstream, five years from now, 10 years now, this document will be seen as foundational for our success and it's a testament to the courage and confidence of all the achievements we've achieved to date to be able to stand on that foundation and say, we can go further. And I can't, I can't understate how important this is and our gratitude as a community for all the folks, everybody involved who put this together. And it's really a testament to the possibilities of our district. Thank you.
Okay, there we go. Thank you to everyone. May I have a motion to proceed on the strategic plan? Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Copeland. Could you please take roll call, Mr. Bleeker?
Roll call, Dr. Morthee.
100%, yes.
Ms. Ziccone. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kuzmareski.
Yes.
Ms. Konico.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
With immense pride and gratitude to everyone, yes. Okay, may I have a motion to open the meeting to the public at this moment? Mr. Gallo, second by Dr. Morthee.
I think Mr. Lee.
Just want to say a quick good night and thank you all for all your participation. And it'll be interesting to watch how this progresses in the future. I'm always here for the board and the administration. So have a good night, all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. All right, now we have a motion.
I don't, no, I don't have anything.
Motion to open to the public, I think it was Mr. Copeland, second by Dr. Morthee. All right, and we'll give it a few moments to see if there are any comments or questions from the public. Okay, we had no questions or comments, so I'm going to ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public, Ms. Konico, second by Mr. Gallo. At this time, we'd like to recess to executive session. There will be, no. There's no action being taken, so we're going to close the Zoom portion. So may I have a motion to recess to executive session, Mr. Kuzmareski, second by Ms. Ziccone. Thank you very much for everyone for attending this meeting.